Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to our Fuch Parish Brothers Schools Link 2025 Awards Program. My name is Dean Gibbitt, I am the Communication Specialist for the Fuch Parish Brothers Schools. Tonight we are honoring our students, your children, because of their achievement in assessment that measures in math, science, English language arts, and social studies. Before we begin, I'd like to just kind of recognize a couple of people in our audience. We have several board members here, and if board members would just kind of give a wave so everyone can see them. Ms. Marion Katina, Ms. Tina Babin, Mr. Barry Plazos, Mr. Henry Lefon Jr., Ms. Valerie Bouzwa, Ms. DePlyde Landis Jr. Did I miss anyone? Okay, before we get started, I'd like everyone to stand up and recite the pledge with me. Our belligerent leaders to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'll turn over the mic to our superintendent, Mr. Gary Martin. All right, thank you. I'd also like to recognize our board president, Mr. Ray Benard, who was hiding behind me just so I couldn't see him, and I just want to also say how proud I am of all the kids who were here tonight. So, as I was just walking up to the podium, so remind me again, when did we take this test? So this test was taken last spring, and if you don't remember last spring, as I just had to refresh myself on where we were as a community last spring, we began the school year learning on the computer at home to read the level. Then we transitioned to school every other day, then we transitioned to school every day. If you were fortunate enough to run the quarantine gauntlet and not get caught up as a close contact, or have somebody in your family catch COVID, and yet somehow throughout all of that, the kids sitting here before still managed to score, not advanced, but a perfect score on the Link 2025 test. So congratulations. I will tell you that for most kids, learning virtually at home, learning at a higher level doesn't work, but you guys have proven that for some kids, no matter what environment you put them in, you're going to succeed. So congratulations on your hard work, we're really proud of you. And without further ado, we're going to call you up for a photo opportunity, get your award, and hopefully send you on to a nice delicious restaurant on this beautiful night in Tibido, so you can keep our sales packs up and running, right? Guys, when your lead gets called, you'll receive your award, and you'll take a picture with our superintendent and our board president, Mr. Ray Benard, and you'll just stand while he goes over here. Got it? Good. All right. Let's start our evening, this is Ann Haas, the regular elementary education.
Thank you. All right, the first award goes to Lila Bouzwa from BCA. She had a perfect score in ELA and Social Studies. Next up for BCA, Elise Broe in ELA. And now we have Lila, she's here now, Lila Bouzwa, congratulations. From BCA, Carol Broe in Social Studies. From BCA, Colin Esjay in Algebra I. From Bayou Blue Elementary School, Gavin Day in ELA. Also from Bayou Blue Upper Elementary, Kobe Dupree in ELA. From Chaffay Elementary, Brennan Orsano in Math. From Lockwood Upper Elementary, Olivia Cunningham in ELA. From North LaRose Elementary, Arabella Morrison in Math. From Racine Upper Elementary, Shay Landry in ELA. From South LaRose Elementary, Preston Nguyen in ELA. From Bayou Blue Middle School, Elia Willey, ELA. From East Tibido Middle School, Anna Perez, Social Studies. From Golden Meadow Middle School, Angel Cho, ELA. From Golden Meadow Middle School, Brianna Betswitz, ELA. From Golden Meadow Middle School, Bo Adrian, Social Studies. From LCO Middle School, Caitlin Gilbert, ELA. From LCO Middle School, Sonia Lee, Math. From Lockwood Middle School, Joslyn Alamo, ELA. From Lockwood Middle School, Blakely Falgood, Math. From Racine Middle School, Brianna Scotland, ELA. From Six Ward Middle School, Ella Alamo, ELA. From Six Ward Middle School, Cohen Oakway, ELA. Six Ward Middle School, Luke Homer, ELA and Social Studies. Six Ward Middle School, Drake Alamo, Social Studies. Six Ward Middle School, Nicholas Broe, Social Studies. Six Ward Middle School, Owen Dela, Social Studies. Six Ward Middle School, Tanya Fox, Social Studies. West Tibido Middle School, Joseph Vicneer, ELA. From Central Fuch High School, Jordan Horns, English II. Central Fuch High School, Noah Bergeron, English II. Central Fuch High School, Gracie Bergeron, English II. Central Fuch High School, Molly Freeman, English II. Central Fuch High School, Valerie Gadien, English II. Central Fuch High School, Nicole Adrian, English II. Central Fuch High School, Molly Kerr, English II. Central Fuch High School, Michaela LaFlore, English II. Central Fuch High School, Violet Schreiber, English II. South Fuch High School, Olivia LaCoppa, English II. South Fuch High School, Ross Rodred, English II. Tibido High School, Kendall Amadi, English I. From Tibido High School, Branson Orsado, English II. From Tibido High School, Connor Sharney, English II. Tibido High School, Kate Claymore, English II. Also from Tibido High School, Kylie Gia, English II. Tibido High School, Garrett Kramer, English II. Tibido High School, Owen Morildo, English II. Tibido High School, Dax Ordor, English II. Tibido High School, Grace Ridgeway, English II. Tibido High School, Brianna Verret, English II. Tibido High School, Mindy Young, English II. And finally, Tibido High School, Latens Zare, English II.
Big round of applause for everybody. To you, as we wrap up, one group that we didn't recognize, I know that the kids had to go through a whole lot, and just mess of a couple of years we've been through, but I wanted to just give my appreciation on behalf of all the schools and the families here tonight, because I recognize fully that these kids would have been successful without the parent support, so give yourself a round of applause. That does conclude tonight's award ceremony, if I'm not missing anything, I know that the roads are a little bit wet, so be safe at home, and thank you so much for what you do for these kids every day. Thank y'all.
Loving and merciful God, we come to you today with an open mind and a servant's heart. Give us the strength to endure any difficulties that may come over our way, so that your will can be done. deepen our connection with you and your people, so that we may remain strong in the faith. Empower us with blessings, love, peace, hope, and joy, so we can best serve our community. Remind us of your promises and heal our pain. We ask all of this in Jesus' name, amen. The United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Mary?
Here.
Ms. Bill?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Ms. Katina?
Here.
Mr. DePlance?
Here.
Mr. Lefon?
Here.
Mr. Archer?
Here.
And Ms. Shutter?
Here.
I will proceed with the agenda, item two A, based in honor and memory of Miss Timothy Long, school board member District Twelve. Let me just say, although Tim wasn't with us for a long amount of time due to his untimely passing, I think this entire board will remember Tim for his warm, gentle personality, but underneath that, he was a guy that took everything and could do everything. He had a strong passion, a passion for the students and for the constituents that he represented in District Twelve, and not only for that, for the entire parish. I think we can all agree, he was a strong advocate for education, whether he served as a teacher, as a principal, or as a school board member. And although we only had Tim from July 2020 to December 2021, he has made a positive impact on this board and for the people he represents. So it's an honor that we can recognize him tonight, and we're so happy that you can be with us, Kathy. I've known you in twenty-five years as an educator and we worked together, and I know the, I know the process, and I'm glad you're here. With that said, we have a plaque to give you in recognition of his time. And if you don't mind, superintendent can pass it to me.
Yes, sir. In loving memory, Timothy Long of Fuch Parish School Board Member District Twelve, grateful recognition and appreciation for his service, dedication, and commitment to Fuch Parish School. Days of service, July 2020 to December 2020.
Don't go too far, because we'll be calling you up again. This time, we all had the opportunity to attend the Louisiana School Board Association's annual conference, and at that particular time, they also presented memorial plaques from the school board to honor the deceased members for that particular year. And at this time, we'd like to, again, not only to honor Mr. Tim Long, but also Mrs. Margaret. So with that said, let's start with Tim again. And also Mrs. Malkin, we have two of her nieces together, and let me say this, Mrs. Malkin, I had the opportunity to know where she served as a school board member from, if I remember correctly, Janet Correct in 1991 to 1998, but she also was the type of lady that started as an accountant in child nutrition, and moves all the way up to be our payroll accountant in the central office. As a school board member, I guarantee you, those are tough times, and you can always rely on Mrs. Malkin, who was a warm person, who would always give her time to talk to you. She was, she was quite a lady, and she'll be missed, and I wish I could tell her that in person, that we do have Janet and both of her nieces. Come on up here, introduce both of yourselves, and we will give you this plaque. Janet?
Janet, we're the show.
For celebrating the time.
All right, Margaret wasn't married, so her nieces and her nephews were her children, so were two of her children.
Is there anything you'd like to say in her behalf, other than what we said?
Love this place.
You know, like when she was proud of, so proud of every case she did for the school system, so, so proud.
And Janet worked with us as well as the executive secretary for the last six years. And I'm missing, I'm missing, so thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
Have to look at our agenda. But at this time, I'd like the, if there are no exceptions, I'd like the board to consider moving item 10A, if you would have done it, to the floor for board discussion and approval prior to item 2C, which is student recognition. And let me read that particular item, if you'd need it. To consider approving the renaming of the Career Magnet Center Annex Lab Building to be named as the Tim L. Long Lab Building. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over. Actually, we don't even need that, as long as, as long as we can get your approval, then we're in good shape. Let's, let's talk to Mr. Kenny Delta, and he'll give us the.
Good evening. We received requests from multiple people that suggested that some aspect of the Career Magnet Center be renamed in honor of its first principal and former school board member, Mr. Tim Long. We established a committee that included myself, board president, Mr. Ray Benard, and chairman of the Land and Facilities Committee, Mr. Barry Plazos. The committee also included students and staff from CMC, as well as Mr. Hugh The committee also included students and staff from CMC, as well as Mr. Hugh Cafrey, the president of Valentine Chemicals, who also was the person who donated the land that the CMC is built upon. The committee decided that the lab building would be most appropriate. A building that Mr. Long brought to life would be renamed the Tim L. Long Lab Building. Through committee discussion and further discussion with teachers at the CMC, Mr. Greg Tupe, Mr. Rodney Dusek, and Mr. Jason Bellaries, they developed a proposed plan to fabricate and install a sign on the existing structure with all of the work to be done by CMC students. At the conclusion of the meeting, a letter detailing this outcome was sent to Mr. Martin for his approval. And at that time, he approved this request and had the item placed on the agenda for your consideration tonight. And additionally, the students at CMC worked up a sample, if you will, of what the sign would look like on the front of that building. The students did that. So again, for your consideration, the committee would like to rename the building the Tim L. Long Lab Building at CMC. Thank you.
Discussion. Let me say this, in serving on that committee, the length of time it took was to determine what the sign would look like. Because we knew right away, that building, there was no other way that Mr. Long would not have that building. So we want to thank Mr. Delcum, this committee. Kathy, we have members of Tim for a long, long time that are in that place. Is there anything you'd like to say? I don't want to put any pressure on you, but would you like to say?
Superintendent Martin, school board members, CMC people, back if you're here, thank you all so much. This is such a great honor. I know he's looking down on us right now, just smiling away because that bad building was his life. Those of you who knew him, education was everything to him. I think it meant more to him than I did, because he was constantly trying to strive to make, you know, education. Where could he work to fulfill, you know, the things that CMC needed? That was his love. That building, that school was everything that he dreamed of. I appreciate it very much, everything that you've done. Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to item 2C, which is the District...
We need to go on that. Yeah. Public comment.
Let's move on. Public comment first. Any comments at all? Let's go. All those in the paper, please, signify on your... And this evening. All right, at this time, let's take a look at the student staff recognition. And this is a good evening.
Good evening, and welcome to our creed, awards recognition program. Every month, we take a little time out of our board meeting to recognize students and staff that go above and beyond where we typically expect them to go. And that's why we do this, just to recognize you guys. At this time, we're going to get your names called up by Mr. Delcum. And as we get your name called, Superintendent and board president will take a picture of you and we'll put it on the web. Okay? Thank you for coming.
The first recognition this evening is to recognize one of our employees that received the National Federation of State High School Association's Outstanding Educator Award. This award goes to Mr. Trent, who is, Mr. Jim Trent, who is one of only 15 people in the country selected for this award. Since 2002, Mr. Trent has served as the Louisiana Music Educator Association District Seven Director. During his career, Mr. Trent also served as president of the District Seven Band Directors Association, the 1995 Louisiana Band Masters Association All-Star Marching Band Director, the vice president of the L Louisiana Association of Jazz Educators, and the inaugural webmaster of the LMEA's official website. Mr. Trent's professional affiliations include the National Association for Music Education, the Jazz Education Network, the District Seven Band Directors Association, and Phi Beta Mu International Band Masters Fraternity. Mr. Jim Trent. We have a second employee to be recognized, the employee. This employee received the Guy Harvey Administrator Leadership Award. Coincidentally, Guy Harvey is a Lafouche Parish, was a Lafouche Parish principal at Tivito High School and a longtime association with the student council across the entire country, which this award speaks to. This award goes to Mr. Glenn Haydale, the principal at Tivito High School, who was recently honored at the Louisiana Association of Student Council's state convention by receiving this Guy Harvey Administrator Leadership Award for his work with the LAFC and the Tivito High Student Council. Mr. Haydale's support of extracurricular activities make it possible for school organizations to excel at Tivito High School. Mr. Glenn Haydale. The next recognition was brought forward by Golden Meadow Middle School. This award goes to Mike Blanch, Rachel, Leah Calle, and their family. Contributions from the Calle family total more than $10,000 in the last two years in support of Golden Meadow Middle School's intervention program for students. Their contributions have also aided in giving food and covering transportation costs for students. Their continued support of Golden Meadow Middle School is greatly appreciated. The Calle family.
Thank you so much for the contributions. Everyone deserves to do it. My commission of that.
But before they leave, I just want to say three things. Mike's my next door neighbor, so I can't let him go without saying that. But really and truly, in our community, this is a family that does so much for, and they have never sought out any type of public knowledge or any spotlight. That's why I'm so happy that we can recognize them. Not only have they contributed to Golden Meadow Middle School, also Gallian Elementary, and they continue to provide support for all the community and schools down nearby and, of course, in the entire district. Now, Mike also is a member, elected member of the Port Commission. Therefore, he takes care of our infrastructure. He's also a member of the hospital board, so he takes care of the health of our community. So we got him in education, health, and the infrastructure. So you're well-rounded, my man. And of course, I know Blanch, thank you so much for supporting you. Yes, we did. Mr. Hennessy, come on up. We gonna walk tomorrow, or? It'll be a little cold tomorrow. You won't break, Hannah?
Yes, sir.
So the next award will go to Camden Gotro from Racine Upper Elementary. Camden recently received second place in the 4H State Ambassador for the Seafood Division.
Congratulations.
The next student to be recognized was a student who was selected to the Louisiana High School Athletic Association's All Academic Composite Boys Basketball Team. To be chosen for this team, the student must have maintained at least a 4.0 grade point average. And this is Jackson Otam from South Lafouche High School. The next student to be recognized was selected to the Louisiana High School Athletic Association All Academic Composite Girls Basketball Team with the same criteria of a minimum 4.0 grade point average, Madison Ryan from South Lafouche High School. Next, we have students who were selected to the LHSA All Academic Composite Boys Soccer Team. The first student from South Lafouche High School, Uriel Mendez Vasquez. Also from Central Lafouche High School, Noah Graber. The next student was selected to the LHSA Composite Academic All-State Girls Soccer Team from Central Lafouche High School, Hayden Poson. These next students were selected to the LHSA All Academic Boys Basketball Team from South Lafouche High School, Patrick Jisple. Also from South Lafouche High School, Mr. Tyler Lee. The next three students were selected by the LHSA for the All Academic Girls Basketball Team. These three students, all from South Lafouche High School, Madeline Boujwa, Abby Collins, and Ava Petrie. The next student was selected to the LHSA All Academic Boys Soccer Team from South Lafouche High School, Jesus Cortez. Next, we have the LHSA All Academic Girls Soccer Team from South Lafouche High School, Ms. Diana Nguyen. The next student is a student who placed second in the District One, Area Seven. Placed second in district and first in area, seventh in the state for FFA Leadership Development Event for extemporaneous speaking. This is Central Lafouche High School, Ms. Elena Lyons.
You got it, Mr. Trent?
Yes, sir.
This next student placed first in district, second in regional, sixth in the state for the FFA Leadership Development Event of Public Speaking, FFA Employment Skills from Central Lafouche High School, Christopher Olds.
There's another one?
I missed it.
You good?
You good?
All right.
This next student placed third in parish, first in district, fourth in the area for the Louisiana FFA Leadership Development Event of FFA Creed Speaking from Central Lafouche High School, Ms. Braylin Rodriguez. And our last recognition for this evening is to recognize a student who placed first in the parish, second in the district, first in the area, and second in the state for Louisiana FFA Leadership Development Event of FFA Creed Speaking from Central Lafouche High School, Mr. Nate Bellinger.
Well, I just want to thank everyone for being here for the awards tonight. Thank you for braving the weather and being here to recognize all the hard work that our kids and staff are doing. Truly a testament to how Lafouche Parish has weathered both COVID and this hurricane. Still performing at a high level, still moving forward, and tomorrow's going to be better, right? So thank y'all for being here. Please be safe as you are. Continue your path home. You're welcome to stay, but I suppose most of you are going to want to trip. So have a good night. Thank you so much.
I wanted, I was bragging on him while he was getting his go. And the best day, I say too, I'm so proud of you.
I think y'all are saying hi.
Doesn't take much.
Thank you all for having me. And it was funny that you were pointing out how my colleagues on all of those boards. Well, I've been making my way around to all of the boards. And when I saw my kid tonight, I was like, are you gliding for money? It's not any better than any other board. I don't know if you're looking for a board that's good, but it's not. As you all know, after Hurricane Ida, there is some laws. I refer to them as the Katrina laws because these laws in the Constitution were implemented after Hurricane Katrina. And what it says is that I shall reassess all of the property according to the damage that was sustained during, after the storm. So immediately after the storm, you know, went over all of the laws. And in those laws, it says that I have to reassess it, but it doesn't tell you any kind of way to do it. So it kind of made me a little bit apprehensive and nervous because there was so much in a 24-hour period. And so it worked out to our benefit because of the geographical layout that La Fouch is, being so linear and long, that the southern part of the parish sustained so much more damage than the northern part of the parish. So in hindsight, it was really good that it kind of leaves it up to the discretion of the assessor on how to do it. Every assessor does it different. In Terrebonne Parish, they chose to do it, you know, give a blanket number across the board and then have everybody come in and further deduct from that point according to the damage they sustained. I chose not to do it that way. I deter, I decided to delay my tax roll and take my time and go through and assess the areas according to the damage. I'm not saying one's right and one's wrong. It's just that I know La Fouch and he knows Terrebonne, so I did what I thought was best for this parish. Everything from the intercoastal south received 50% off of the structure. Now, I only reduced structures. I did not reduce land or anything under the ground. So no oil and gas companies received any deduction because the majority of their things are, properties are under the surface. So it was only, this is only pertaining to structures. From the intercoastal south, I took off 50% off of the structures. From Highway 90 to the intercoastal, it was 25%. From the Tivito line to Highway 90, it was 15, and Tivito received 5%. The Kramer or Bayou Buff area, the Des Almonds area, and the Hamilton Gemini neighborhood that received rain, floodwaters along with wind-driven rain, those three areas received 50% as well. Personal property, it depended on where it was located. In Fouchon, I'm just gonna hit on the major ones that impacted the tax base. In Fouchon, it was anywhere between 10 and 15% depending on what inventory and machinery and equipment they had there that they didn't move out. All commercial properties from throughout the whole parish, those were assessed and deducted according case by case. I was able to take the imagery and there was a smaller number of commercial properties than real, you know, residential properties. So I was able to do those percentages accordingly. Those varied anywhere from 5% to 75, 80%. Down in Fouchon, there was a structure that received 80% reduction just because the 80% of it was gone. The Katrina laws also say that if a structure is demolished or destroyed due to the storm, that I am to remove that structure. Typically, when I remove a structure from an assessment, I remove the homestead exemption and a bill is generated. In the Katrina laws, I cannot remove the homestead exemption. Even though the structure is destroyed or demolished, I am to remove the structure and the homestead exemption remains on the property for two years unless the homeowner qualifies for homestead exemption somewhere else. Even in a storm, you're only entitled to one homestead exemption. So if they go and they live with their mom or their children or they rent the property, as long as they do not claim homestead exemption anywhere else, they are entitled to their homestead in La Fouch Parish. If they go and they buy another property and qualify, then I will remove the homestead. That is for years one and two. In years three, four, and five, the burden of proof shifts from the assessor's office to the taxpayer. They have to come to me and prove to me that their intent is to move back to that property. If they cannot prove it, the homestead exemption will be removed. I'm telling you that for two reasons. One is I don't want you to go through my assessments and go, Wendy's not doing her job. There's a bunch of empty properties with homestead exemptions, first and foremost. Second of all, I'm telling you because I want you all to understand that those properties that had structures, even though they received a homestead, a lot of them were paying taxes above the $75,000. When I remove that structure, there are hardly any properties, empty locks or land that is worth over $75,000. So you are gonna be losing that revenue. I just want you to be mindful of that. Another thing that, reason why I delayed the homestead, the tax roll, and I did it the way I chose to, for two reasons. One is because I wanted it to be as least burdensome as possible on the taxpayer. I did not want their property taxes to become another line item on their list of things to do. They had enough to contend with as far as the justice, interim contractors and so forth. I did not want their property taxes to be another thing to do. That is my job and my staff's job, and that's why we did it the way we did. The second, the second reason I did it is because when I come in front of these boards and I give you these numbers, I wanted these numbers to be as accurate as possible. If I would've did it the other way and ran it the whole earlier, I would've given you a number. But then everybody would've came in and filed for their additional deductions. The number I gave you could be a million dollars off, especially with a board that receives so much revenue. It could've been $10 million off. So when I give you this number, this is the most accurate number I can possibly give you. Now, once, the Constitution says that any damage that was sustained during the storm. So I went and reassessed 55,000 properties. Of those 55,000 properties, I sent out the notices. I've only had, to date, 100 people ask me for additional reductions out of 55,000. That tells me we did our job. Now, when I send out the bills, they still are entitled, the Constitution entitles them, that if they have, if they didn't come in and ask for the deductions, they still can do it, and I have to give them those deductions. But during reassessment, it's kind of like the same process. So I send out the notices and people call, it's too high, you know, I'm over it, it's not worth that much. And typically, however, whatever the response is when I send out the letters, that's typically what happens. When the bills go out, I get about the same amount. I am hopeful that that is going to hold true for this reassessment due to the hurricane. So I am anticipating anywhere from 100 to 150 people to call. So total out of 55,250 is very good. So the number I'm giving you tonight, even though it's gonna be drastically reduced, you will have an accurate number in order to make the deductions, the cuts, and adjustments to your budget accordingly. I did not want to give you a number, you think you're getting that much, and then when the money doesn't come, you come to me and go, okay, Wendy, that's not what you told me. So I'd rather give you the bad news and you'd be mad at me. And that's really what I was giving, I was really delaying, y'all getting mad at me, but anyway. So once the bills go out, I will take my tax roll, the 2021 tax roll, and I will erase and remove all of the deductions I made for 2021, except for the demos. Anything that was demolished, of course, I can't change that. So any hurricane deductions I made, I will remove that for 2022. And the Constitution is only good for the 2021 year. So if the burden shifts from my office to the taxpayer, they will have to come in and prove that they still have damage and they haven't been made whole. What that process will kind of look like, what I'm anticipating, is that say somebody lost their roof and they had to gut their house, that if they put their roof, if they got a new roof, that the adjustment will just be made for the house still being gutted. It won't be the roof and the house. So it'll kind of go that way. That, I am anticipating that process to go on for 2022 tax roll, '23, '24, '25, and '26. I am anticipating that to go on for five years. So every year, I am anticipating that to be a little bit less and less, hopefully, because everybody will be fixing their houses in that time. After the 2022 tax roll is completed, I have every intention to get the tax roll back on time. Because what I've learned in research and talking to other assessors that have ice storms, floods, hurricanes, is that I can delay the tax roll, they will allow me to do that, but I don't want to do that. Even though people will give bills in two years, two bills in the same year, what I have found is that it causes so much, so many problems later on. When you keep delaying the tax roll, it causes problems with districts because they can't get their money and their budgets right. And it also causes problems with people's mortgage payments because it keeps on delaying it. So that, we have every intention in my office to get it back on track and the roll be certified by the beginning of November and the bills come out in November. Then, once the 2022 tax roll is done, the same thing will happen. In 2023, I will remove all of the hurricane deductions and so forth, and they will still have to come in and prove that. So that's kind of like the timeline and just to try and get everything straight on how all of that's gonna work in the future because I know everybody has a lot of questions about that. Also, some things that are handled behind the scenes that people don't see. Our office works very close with the sheriff's office as best, and the sheriff has been so helpful. One of the issues that arose was that people pay their property taxes in their escrow accounts. So your escrow by law has to refund that escrow if it doesn't get paid. Well, the sheriff wrote a letter to the major mortgage companies and explained what was happening and asked them to delay refunding the escrows because we didn't want people to get their checks and go, woo-hoo, I got, you know, $1,500. Go spend it, and then we send them a bill and they didn't have any money. So that seems to be, so far, so good. The mortgage companies seem to have responded to that. Another thing is getting the bills out. We, believe it or not, we had the most trouble with envelopes, but we took care of that. Everything's ready. As soon as I get the roll certified, I am planning, I am on the agenda for next Wednesday to get the tax roll certified. Once the roll gets certified, I'll send that certification letter to the sheriff and his staff is ready to go print the letters. They're saying and anticipating about seven to 10 days after that certification comes through to get the tax bills on the street. We have also worked together on communicating how the bills are going to make sure that everybody knows that the bills are out. Because some people don't have internet, some people don't have mailboxes. So we have a communication campaign, both in conjunction, the two offices, in order to get that word out. So that's how that's gonna be handled. The majority of the questions I get in my office is, when can I pay my tax bill? I think that they got their letters and they saw the reduction and they said, I'm gonna change it back before they can pay it. So they are calling, that is the majority of the questions that I get. Which is a good sign, in my mind, that's a good sign, that people are gonna pay and that our districts will start getting the money in pretty, fairly quick. So after I finish all of the deductions, as you can see, I'm kind of preoccupied because it's like, I buddy y'all up before I grab it. But as I finished reassessing everything, I want the total amount removed from the parish-wide tax base was $30 million. That's a $3 billion reduction in market value. I know that sounds really, really, really bad, but my initial projections on the reduction in the tax base was closer to 42% to 45%. And the reason being is there are three major cranes in Port Fouchon, and each one of those cranes are valued at $25 million apiece. I thought those cranes were destroyed and I was gonna have to remove them. But after meeting with Chad Chasson, he was like, no, Wendy, they're not destroyed. They're damaged, but they're not destroyed. So that means that I just had a reduction, not a removal. So believe it or not, our tax base is so volatile, just like the oil and gas industry because we rely so heavily on that, that something as little, as few as three cranes shifted that reduction from 42% to 25%. The $30 million reduction was a 25% reduction in the whole tax base. So of that $30 million, the school board in 2020, and I'm just giving you totals, y'all have a bunch of different millages. I just totaled the millages up. So what I'm giving you is total for all of them. For 2020, the school board received $42,591,788.12 and 2021, you'll receive $32,308,745.60. That's a difference of $10,283,42.52. That is a 24.14% reduction. Y'all have any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question, maybe more for Jared. Jared, is the loss tax revenues reimbursable by the end?
So I don't believe that it is, but we do have a, we have a state legislator who is potentially looking at those hurricane-affected parishes and how the adware and taxes or impact the local governments in those greatly affected hurricane parishes. I believe that would be St. James, St. John, St. Charles, Terrebonne, La Fouch, potential Jefferson, where the state has this one-time money and they may be able to offset some of the loss. But I will tell you, as gloom has the message brought by the lovely Ms. Tivito last night, the sales taxes do the opposite. So there is some offset there, and the state legislature is not gonna have an appetite to give us more than the net loss, which means look at the sales revenue, property revenue, and if there's a delta, they may be able to offset some of that. But they're not gonna just offset the 10 if you add another increase, as an example, by the sales. Any other questions?
I know, it is hard and, you know, there are some things that I wasn't anticipating. One thing is that, like, if I would've did it the other way and I would've just gave like a smaller percentage across the board and made people come in, what I'm finding is that, say in the southern part of the parish, that if there was a $100,000 home and I reduced it to $50,000 and they had $80,000 worth of damage, I'm finding that the people are not coming in asking for that extra 30. That they're satisfied to compromise with the 50, which is good because our districts are actually collecting the revenue on that 30. To where if I would've did it the other way, they would've came in and I would've had to give them the full 80. So that is something that I wasn't anticipating. I could take credit for it, but I'm not going to, but that is something positive that wasn't anticipated. Believe it or not, this is, in my mind, a happy medium. I am comfortable with what I did. It wasn't an easy decision to make, but I do feel like that the way our parish has laid out, that we, this was the best way to do it. So if y'all have any questions, if you think of something later, email me. I'm going around talking to everybody and, I mean, I...
Any other questions?
Mr. President. No question. Just like to tell you thank you for your office, your staff, the hard work that they did. This is not the best-case scenario for us, but honestly, in my head, I thought it would've been worse.
I did too.
Considering looking at the parish, the sales tax increases,
I'm not gonna lie, there's three crane savings. I mean, I love cranes. I'm getting a little, that used to be boats, I'm moving to cranes now. I really, it really is. And it, but it is scary and we do have to realize that it takes something as little as three that it takes something as little as three cranes to remove seventy-five million dollars. You know, so I appreciate it, thank you. My staff has been unbelievable and, look, they're not getting a break because as soon as it gets certified, we switch it up because I'm five months behind on 2022. So, but if anybody knows me, if I set a goal, I have every intention of meeting it. So, you know, I'm hopeful. I, you know, there wasn't a mass exit as, you know, in other storms. The other thing is the oil and gas industry, it has picked up. I mean, our gas prices everywhere is complaining about it, I'm thrilled. You know, because I'm hoping that that will entice people to stay and, i.e., come here, you know, and move here and buy their properties and so forth. So I am hopeful, but I can't wait as anything like this, you can't make any guarantees. But if y'all have any questions, please call my office. We're busy, but never, you know, just email us. I have a village and they keep me straight and I give them all the props because I'd be crazy at this point.
Point two, how many employees you have?
I have eighteen at the moment, part-time and full-time. My South La Pouche office and my Lockport office, they're up in Tivito. My Lockport office will be opened up. I can go back now, but I don't want the bills to go out and everybody from South La Pouche and Lockport and Central La Pouche come to my one person in Lockport. So I don't want my staff to be overwhelmed. So what I'm keeping, everybody up in Tivito until that wave, until the bills go out and that wave comes through of people calling and needing help and adjustment, once that died down, I will put my employee back in Lockport. I spoke in front of Golden Meadow. The mayor has offered an office in his town hall. I have to work out the logistics, I got to see if the logistics works. And just to be honest, which I'm so busy with the tax roll and everything right now, I just haven't, that's down on the priority list. So that is a consideration that I do have available to me that I will look into after the bills go out and I kind of get 2022 going.
Okay, Mr. President, thank you. You've always been honest and professional. Whenever you appear in front of the board, sometimes what you say is easy to digest, I'll answer it now. But we do appreciate you coming and if any questions, sure.
Thank you, thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, let's move on. The next item is approval of 42% of the number. A, approval of 42% of the number. We have a motion. And that, so we have a discussion by board. And so, uh, let's go. Handle, handle this. All right, let's move on. Item B, minutes of the regular board meeting held February 2nd, 2022. We need a motion. Uh, we need a second. Mr. Schuess. It's done. We have a discussion by the board. Discussion of the problem. Not this board. Another handbook. Yes. Another handbook. Always in favor? Yes, thank you. C, services in schools. Employee Appreciation Day on March 4th, 2022. National School Social Work Week on March 6th to 12th, 2022. Teachers' Day on March 17th, coming on the 2nd. Do we have a motion? Mr. Digg, do we have a second? Dr. Digg, seriously. Any comments on the board?
I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Dean Giedrich for being so active on social media and from the way he uses appreciation days, I wrote it very well. We very much appreciate our employees that they're being recognized. So thank you, Mr. Dean, for giving that for us. We very much appreciate it.
Any other comments?
Thank you for the comments. Mr. Digg?
Yes, I just want to say that Retired Teachers' Day is on March 17th, but on April 27th, the Retired Teachers Association in Fouche Parish will celebrate fifty years of getting in that organization. So I was asked that I would bring that up. So, and it's open to the public. All we have to do is send you lunch money, lunch money, and a little ten, it'll be a nice, nice celebration. Thank you.
Great organization. All right, any other comments on the board? Any comments? The board, this board. Does it have a handbook? Yes. Thank you. All right, with that out the way, let's move to five. Approval of policy procedures for your recommendations as per meeting held February 15th, 2022. And, uh, Mr. President.
Yes. Our recommendation is to approve revisions to policies DJE purchasing, DJE bids and quotations, GBRHA sabbatical, GBRIB simply, IHAB workhorts, IHAD parent conferences, JG student welfare, JQD expected in parenting students. So...
Let's move to the other side. Mr. Schuess. Discussion of the numbers of four. Any of these that leave any explanation? Any public comment? That, let's go. All right, let's move to approval of land and facility management committee recommendations as per meeting held February 15th, 2022. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. A, to accept the request from Mr. Christina Hopkins with diamond leap volleyball to waiver all fees with the exception of custodial fees associated with the use of the gym at East Tivito Middle School for volleyball practices beginning as soon as possible through June 2022. So do we have a second? We have a discussion by the board.
Now, just a question, has she furnished her insurance?
No, she, no, she has not. And they will not be able to use the facilities until any insurance has been approved.
She's aware of that.
She's aware of it. So all we'll be waiting on, if the board approves waiving the fees, is for Mr. John Norris, our insurance consultant, to waive or to allow it to move forward once her insurance is approved.
Mr. Digg. So there is a certificate of insurance on the document, is that accurate for him?
So what has to happen, not only do you produce a certificate of insurance, Mr. Norris has to check for a myriad of other things than a certificate because the certificates have to be ordered in such a way that removes all liability from the association from us.
So it has not been cleared?
It has not been vetted by Mr. Norris yet. We anticipate it's going to get done without issue. But until he gives the green light to the business department of land and facilities, they pay him, they're not allowed to use it. So there's no need to postpone this, anything. There's no need to postpone it. What this board is doing is waiving the fees. It is not authorizing the use of facilities that would be an insurance requirement. That must, everybody else has all the handles. Any other discussion? Public discussion. Always in favor? Let's go.
Okay, let's do next.
Mr. Plizzons? To authorize hiring of staggers, building, butling engineers for the transfer switch to be installed at Tivito High School. So...
You have a second, Mr. Plizzons? We have a board discussion. One of the things that I wasn't sure, I was on the transfer switch. But Mr. Plizzons has explained that this is simply a use of the general of mandatory evacuation. Okay. All right, I've said, any other board discussion? Any discussion with the public, Mr. President? And, Mr. Plizzons?
C, to accept the request to advertise for bids when construction documents are complete for the chiller replacement at South La Pouche High School and go to metal lower elementary school. So...
Board discussion. Public discussion. Uh, let's go. And, Mr. Plizzons?
Okay, Mr. Plizzons? On to E, to authorize appetites for proposals for the disaster-related services for green removal, architecture and design, repair and replacement, waterproofing of buildings, roofing windows, electrical services, plumbing, HVAC services, and general contracting services. So...
You have a second. Shot. A group discussion on this side. Public discussion. Now, let's go. And, Mr. Plizzons?
E, to authorize appetites for bids for disaster-related equipment rentals. So...
You have a second. Let's do the class, board discussion. Public, not this board. And, Mr. Plizzons?
To receive reports on proposals received for emergency environmental services and award most responsive and highest floor proposal from Ritter Consulting Engineers. So...
Do you have a second? Quick, board discussion. Public discussion. Now, let's go. Thank you, Mr. Plizzons. Appreciate that. This is one, we, hopefully, hopefully, and you then, Mr. Plizzons. Thank you. All right, let's go. Senator, Senator A, approval of superintendent's evaluation committee recommendation as per meeting held February 16th, 2022. Mr. Babin?
To consider approving provisions to policy CE on evaluation of superintendent. So...
Do we have a second? Mr. Schuess, board discussion. Mr. Babin, with this, this report, you just capsulated for the second work has changed as far as evaluation.
Absolutely. So the main component of this is that we decided as a group to go ahead and change the evaluations to be once a school year rather than twice a school year. And instead of doing this in two busy months that we have in December and May, we decided to do this in July. When everything calm down after the school year is over, we have a combination and we can see how the school year actually...
Do you have any other comments? Yes.
I just want to say that that LCPA, they did talk about by way of Mr. Lieutenant and they said that it's good to have the evaluation for the superintendent beginning of the year so that he can work on it or she can work on it both years. So this is the time, we'll finish in July and have it at the beginning of the year, work on whatever areas, some, so, good job, committee.
Thank you, very good. Any other comments?
Just one, I think that'll work well also. You're going to have a new board coming in in January, in January and they'll have seven months to sit back and watch things how they are. So I think that's good, that's very good.
Good point. Any other comments about? Any comments in the public, not this board? Thank you, Ms. Babin. Number eight, board of the finance committee recommendations as per meeting held February 16th, 2022. Mr. Plizzons?
To consider authorizing a resolution providing for the issuance of not exceeding eleven million dollars of general obligation school refunding bond series 2022 of consolidated school district number one of the parish of Fouche, Louisiana, providing for the matters in connection therewith and to take appropriate action.
So move. Do we have a second, Mr. Schuess? Board discussion.
It's not a new bond, it is a refund.
Any other discussion of the board? Any discussion of the public, not this board? Continue, Mr. Plizzons, please.
All right, I'm going to be to approve a resolution authorizing the Fouche Parish school board to proceed with financing hurricane recovery costs through the Louisiana Local Government, Environmental Facilities, and Community Development Authority providing for other matters in connection therewith.
So move. Right, second. Mr. Plizzons, board discussion.
I just want to say that this is really explained well to us at the board meeting and then at the finance committee meeting. So it's not something that we're just jumping into and we don't very well aware of.
So let me just ask, Mr. Schuess. There's a ten-year gap to be this, is that right? Ten years and there's no interest rate higher than five percent?
Yes. With, 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 they're going to go through the LCBA with and the state bond division with as a maximum, a parameter resolution. Maximum amount borrowed, not to exceed, and an interest rate not to exceed. Now, the majority of this borrowing will be reimbursable by fee along with probability, interest, and a portion of cost of issues. So hopefully this, it'll be a net. It won't be, it won't hurt us too bad.
Any other comments? Any comments in the public, not this board? Mr. Plizzons, and the C?
To approve the highest storage goals of received for E-ray MIBS CAT II products and services. So move.
You have a second. Mr. Schuess? Board discussion? Public discussion? Let's go. And, Mr. Plizzons? Thank you, Ms. Plizzons. All right, let's move on to letter number nine. Approval of back end... Approve of academic committee recommendations as per meeting out February sixteen, two thousand twenty-two.
Letter eight, to consider approving the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three academic school calendar.
So move. You have a second. Board discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to point out for everyone viewing and for everyone in our audience that there was a survey put out by the Child Welfare and Attendance Office to all of our employees asking their opinions on what they would like to see in the upcoming academic calendar. We had a total of eight hundred and eighty-eight responses from our employees, and I'm proud to say that there was an overwhelming majority that chose this. At least seven out of every ten people chose this calendar. So it was a really clear and easy calendar to make. I also just want to say that there was a little confusion with some of the questions that we asked. Some employees interpreted as us, as we were trying to take away some of the holidays. That was not the case at all. It was simply to show that if we started the school year later, this would be a result of that, or if we started earlier, this would be a result. So the holidays would have to shift to make up for that instructional time, regardless if we started earlier or later. So we just wanted to be very transparent about what would happen and what the consequences would be if we started later in the school year versus a typical starting. So with this, I want to thank the Child Welfare and Attendance Office for their hard work in putting this together for us. Thank you.
You have comments?
And I do like the way the day was broken down and we could see the results of each question and the percentages. That's really, really impressive, too. Good night, dear. Thank you.
When I was involved in child welfare and attendance, I was involved with the school calendar a little bit as well, but not to the point that we got it so easy for our employees to look at and to appreciate. And this is the first time in many years that our employees actually have some input into construction of the calendar. So again, I just want to echo this. I'm set, and any other board discussion? We've already moved item ten A. And let me say this, in lieu of an item, we didn't need any notions or anything. As long as no one object at that particular point, that was before.
Mr. President? Yes, sir. I just want to echo what Mr. Plizos said months ago, said sometimes when we cover, as you remember on the board meeting, sometimes it seems like maybe to the public that we're really running through these things. There's a lot of work that's still in committee and a lot of the interviews, the questions and stuff, so it's not like we don't rehash it again, but it's all, we've been through it, we've been through it all.
Yes, and of course, we always make the statement, we should publically be more involved in committee meetings. Sometimes as a board, it's good maybe to explain a little bit some of those things that actually belong to committee, so maybe spread it out a little bit to get a better understanding. So thank you, Plizos. All right, Ms. Blue, let's go on. We've already moved item L, and let's take with it the more resolutions of the store with Ms. Plizos and Mr. Lloyd, and also your guidance.
Mr. Lloyd Danos was hired by the Fush Parish Division on August twenty-sixth, nineteen thirty-eight as a teacher at Weston High and felt on elementary school. On August twenty-first, nineteen eighty, Mr. Danos was promoted to Assistant Principal of Weston Junior High School and then to Principal at Weston Junior High School on January first, nineteen ninety-seven. Mr. Danos retired on December thirty-first, nineteen eighty-nine, having served with the Fush Parish School District for a total of thirty point five years.
Mrs. Carol Bevan? Mrs. Plizos?
Mrs. Carol Bevan retired by the Fush Parish School District on August seventeenth, nineteen ninety-two as a child nutrition technician at West Tibbetto Junior High School. She also worked at South Tibbetto Elementary. Ms. Bevan retired on June the first, twenty, two thousand and two, having served with the Fush Parish School District for a total of ten years.
And Mr. Andy Rister, school janitor. Mr. Andy Rister was hired in July seventh, two thousand fourteen as a school janitor at Central Fush High School. He resigned his position on March fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Rister was rehired as a school janitor at South Rose Elementary School. He also worked in Risen Upper Elementary School. Mr. Rister passed away on February third, two thousand twenty-two. He served the Fush Parish School District for a total of six years.
Mr. President, I believe that these resolutions be adopted by general consent and then a copy of these resolutions be recorded on a special page of our meeting.
With no objections, let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and will be recorded in special papers of our. Okay, before we get on to the superintendent's update, normally when we go to conference in the past, we would always assign someone to write a little part in the place. Well, we didn't do that this time, so I want to give a brief, brief synopsis of some of the things that the ten people that attended this board meeting witnessed and were able to attend, and after that, we can look at it up if anybody else would like to add to the statements. We started off on the eighty-fourth annual convention from March sixth to the eighth, and the first, the first item is really of interest because it explained the bills that were prefiled in the two thousand twenty-two episode session and giving some outlook on what to look at as that session goes on as to what those are actually good for. I thought that was important. First Lady Donna Edwards across the board. I know there's a few pictures taken, I saw Ms. Plizos on, which was a beautiful picture of her and Ms. Edwards, and basically, Ms. Edwards more or less talked about early learning and of course the importance of planning the public education, which our husband, our mayor, who is looking toward giving our teachers a well-deserved place, technology in the classroom. In going to these various workshops, I think we're doing a lot. They mentioned we have doing a lot in the classrooms right now. Importance of dual enrollment, career magnet center, and so it's really good to go into town on that, and that, that's very important in our partnership with Nicholas State University. I think one of the most important things that hit home in probably all of our school board members was teaching with intention to teach with purpose. That was something that I feel that our superintendent really has a hold on. He's been working very closely with Nicholas State University, trying to set up some types of programs, and I know that Dr. Giop is involved in a small way with that as well as our representative, and we look forward to active progress and hopefully keep those teachers in the Fush Parish. Bond, Sabas Elek, and I know Ms. Plizos really into that and thought it was very informative. In fact, it was packed with activity, had a lot of people. Teacher retirement system, I know that Ms. Plizos directly involved in that, that was on the scene as well. And I, and I think the best, to me, one of the best speakers was at the end, Dr. Curtis Jones, who's a national superintendent of the year in Georgia. He listed ten themes that were very important to school board members and the superintendent group, and as they went through their check list, I can quickly say as far as my opinion, it's concerning that we met everyone. And I think that this board should be very pleased. And the superintendent, we would say, well, any comments from any board members about any other thing that I might have missed during the convention and stuff? Now, we also had the opportunity, outside of the convention, we have a good bonding with someone who is very cool and very fond, okay? So we got to know each other in a more relaxed environment, and I think that's important as well. But a lot of times in more formal meetings, this also gives us opportunity for long, early friendships and concerns. That said, the superintendent gave his message.
Yes, sir. So four themes for the superintendent's report this month remain the same: staffing, item recovery, teaching and learning, and then looking ahead. On the staffing front, Mr. Bill's office met with the leadership team at Nicholas State University's Education Department. Dr. Giop was part of that meeting, and I think that we had a very productive first meeting. The important thing is going to be keep the movement moving forward and keep pressure both on ourselves and Nicholas State University to make this partnership be one of true meaning. We should absolutely be getting the lion's share of Nicholas, right? They're in fact in our parish, right? So that's the reason why we should not be getting the overwhelming majority of Nicholas State University students. And what we're attempting to do on that front is have Nicholas State University students complete, become qualified, and become able to substitute teach in our school system as a part-time job as they're going through their education. Ensure that we get the most student teachers, teachers going through what's now being called residency in our district. And the last thing that we told them is that we were leaving. It's because of COVID, it put a hold on teacher, or I should say student-teacher observations, which is that if you're at a young college of education student, many of you that are in the education world remember, you had to go get six hours or fifteen hours of observation as early as eight to fifty. That had not been happening, and they didn't ask yet for that to be lifted. So I immediately launched out, no, I want them on our campus. I believe that being on our campuses is our biggest and best recruiting tool to young college of education majors. So we continue to actively work that partnership with Nicholas, and I'm very optimistic that it's going to, it's going to lead to many more candidates. On item recovery, we have finally received prices for damages at Bayou Buff and Golden Meadow Middle School. Those exact numbers will be delivered to the land facilities committee, but I will be remiss if I didn't tell you that it's good news. We did not meet the threshold by FEMA definitions to completely demolish and abandon those two sites. So you are now being told by your FEMA consultants that you should repair Bayou Buff Elementary School and it will be FEMA reimbursable, and that you should repair Golden Meadow Middle School and it will be FEMA reimbursable. The threshold is, that exists here in the first round, I see him in the back there. It is really good news and definitely worthy of celebration. We were afraid that it was going to be eighty or a hundred percent destroyed and you have to get to the entire rebuilding process, which is both complicated, but also we have to file that FEMA claim. It slows that FEMA claim down because the threshold is so high. But these two campuses did not meet that threshold. We have some buildings on some campuses that do reach that threshold, but as a campus, you're going to see through native facility, the recommendation from all south is going to be repaired. Plans for students next year are still forthcoming because we don't know how much of the campuses we can get back up and running. I know that Mr. Plizos has a meeting at Bayou Buff Elementary and the Architect very near the future so that we can see how many classrooms we can get up at Bayou Buff Elementary in the fall, so that way we can come up with plans for the students that are now currently being housed at Chack Bay and Sixth Door. We don't believe that Bayou Buff is going to be repaired in its entirety by August, which means that some students will likely still be displaced, but we're hoping to have at least a contingent of our youngest learners that live in the primary community back at Bayou Buff Elementary for the fall. So all of this is going to be in the lap of Mr. Barry Plizos at native facilities, very soon. Teaching and learning, this week we had one student positive with COVID in the first parish, one student. Again, something very worthy of celebration. We had our darkest days of COVID in the early days of the beginning of the year this year. So January, February, our numbers have never been higher, and I guess by the grace of God and good luck, we've now gotten down to a much more manageable number. And the vast majority of kids quarantined, which is only thirty-three kids are quarantined because of contact that happened not in our schools, but in their families and places outside of campus. So it looks like things are getting better with that. And looking ahead, we are excited, I don't know if you all saw, but we were able to advertise the dates that we're going to have our summer academy. It's already being received in the community really, really well, because I think the community is looking forward to having a place where the kids can go, have fun, stay in at the school, and be exposed to arts, music, athletics, and of course, we're going to sneak in some, some high-quality math and English in a way that kids like. So we're looking forward to the summer academy. Ms. Kelly Verlet's already identifying those site leaders and making those specific plans for that. And I will close with that forthcoming to the finance committee will be a recommendation from the business department, federal programs. We're hoping to increase what was scheduled to be a one thousand dollar stipend to teachers at the end of this year. We're hoping to increase that, and we're actually hoping to, to get approval from finance and bring to the board a plan that will give an increased stipend in May, another smaller stipend in November of next year, and then another larger stipend next May. And this is to directly impact the direct competition we're facing from the private sector and other areas to recruit and retain the very best teachers. It is the number one challenge and the number one goal that I have moving forward is to get our teacher compensation to a competitive level so that we can compete with every school district in Louisiana. That is our report, Mr. President. Thank you so much.
Let me ask you this. Normally when we make reports like this, you email us.
Yes, sir.
Can you do the same with the board?
Yes.
Any other questions by the board?
I think that comment at LSBA, you know, with our summer program, I think next year that might be something that we want to submit to showcase at the conference, because I did see presentations from some other districts, and I think that would be, you know, really good, and it would be a good advertisement for, for us and for our framework.
Yes, ma'am. In fact, Dr. Brooney was commenting after having presented our plans to the superintendent of the state, I believe it was two months ago, the superintendent. Ms. Kelly Verlet's done a phenomenal job with this, and I think Dr. Brooney being a state superintendent, thought so highly of anyone from our state to see, so he's very proud, I'm sure he's very proud of Ms. Verlet's doing her type of job.
I think, yeah, certainly seeing it as many places as we can.
Yes.
Will be really good. And I like the idea of the partnership that we're doing with Nicholas, because I did attend that, the retention of teachers session and one of our neighboring parishes, which I will not mention.
Thank you for that.
That has been advertising forty-nine miles for forty-nine thousand, and they've been advertising this in Tibbetto, and I'm like, what? Move yourself out of our, this is our golfing ground. So anyway, so I'm glad that you know that we are doing that with Nicholas.
Well, the one good thing with the mileage increasing of gas, maybe the forty-nine miles might seem a little bit too. Okay, we'll expect an email on that. Any other, any other questions by the board, for our superintendent? All right, if not, this will be kind of the case of future meetings. Policy decision committee Tuesday, March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Transportation committee Tuesday, March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Land and Facility Management Committee Tuesday, March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Insurance Committee Wednesday, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. Finance Committee Wednesday, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. Academic Committee Wednesday, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. Board member in service Wednesday, March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Advisory Committee March, excuse me, April fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Regular board meeting Wednesday, April sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Any other decisions to be brought in from the board? Mr. Plizos?